I'd like to call this September fifteenth Dorchester County Water and Sewer Committee meeting to order, and if everyone will please rise, we will start with the invocation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I got this. Gracious help me Father, just thank you so much for the opportunity to come together, Lord, just as citizens in the community, just the opportunity to be able to work together to make our community a better place, Lord. Lord, just want to lift up our country and our nation, you know, we are certainly dealing with challenges and divisions, and Lord just asks that we be able to talk to one another, that we be able to pray for one another, and God just asks that we come together as a nation as well. Ask that you give us wisdom and discernment that we make the best decisions for our community this evening, in your name we pray, amen.
Amen. All right, we have one item on the agenda tonight, and is a request for approval of new sewer service for a hundred and nineteen lot subdivision by Knightsville LLC, TMS number one three five dash one six dash zero zero dash zero six eight, located near the town of Somerville for the Knightsville Central Avenue track phases one and two.
So moved.
There is a motion and a second, any discussion?
The usual questions, which I know have already been answered, this checkbook, we're good there, sir?
The checkbook is good, the property is already, it's currently zoned R four, so it's by right zoning from that standpoint, so it's met all the criteria, so I don't have to ask questions either.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
This is in the town of Somerville, correct?
No, no, it's in Dorchester County, it's not in the town of Somerville. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
We are unanimous. Is there any other motions?
Motion adjourned.
There are several motions to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
We are unanimous, and we are adjourned, and we will start again in a little bit less than nine minutes. I'm going to call this September fifteenth Dorchester County Council meeting to order, and I will ask if everyone will please rise. Councilman Crosby will lead us in the invocation afterward, the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, if you'll bow with me. As our hearts are heavy with the things going on in this world and this nation, Paul writes in Galatians, "For freedom Christ has set us free. Stand firm therefore, and do not submit again to the yoke of slavery." And in verse thirteen, he picks up and he says, "For you are called to freedom, brothers; only do not use your freedom as an opportunity for the flesh, but through love serve one another." Heavenly Father, we cry out to you in love and humility, asking for your Spirit to fill this place, fill this nation, Lord, bringing your peace that passes all understanding. Turn the hearts of our nation back to you, and we pray, Lord, that you take not your Spirit from us, we need you, Lord. Hear the prayers of your people, incline the ear to your servants, Lord God. Bless this time, may it be glorifying and honoring to you. Grant us an extra measure of wisdom and discernment to carry out the work you have given us to do for your glory and the good of the community and the people we serve. We ask this humbly and boldly, in Jesus' holy and mighty name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the, I guess I can get that down so it works. First item on the agenda is adoption of minutes from the September second County Council meeting.
So moved.
Second.
There is a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We are unanimous. Next item on the agenda is adoption of resolution number twenty-five dash fourteen, a resolution to recognize Marion Thompson for his service to Dorchester County and Trident Technical College. Mr. Hearn.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. It is my honor to read this, and folks, I do apologize for my voice, I'm sorry in advance, but this is State of South Carolina, County of Dorchester, resolution number twenty-five dash fourteen. This is a resolution to recognize Marion Thompson for his service to Dorchester County and Trident Technical College. Whereas Marion Kane Thompson was born and raised in South Carolina, graduated from Manning High School, attended Clemson University, and served his country with honor in the United States Marine Corps. And whereas, Mr. Thompson passed away peacefully in Somerville on Thursday, January thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, at the age of eighty-seven. And whereas, Mr. Thompson was the devoted husband of Sadie Brunson Thompson for sixty-five years, the loving father of Elizabeth Beth Thompson Smoke, Dorothy Claire Thompson and Rodney Marion Thompson, the proud grandfather of five grandchildren, and the proud great-grandfather of seven great-grandchildren. And whereas, Marion Thompson retired from Paul Lawton Construction, this must be a typo, at the age of eighty-five, eighty-five, and was a faithful member of Bethany United Methodist Church in Somerville, where he served in numerous roles, including Sunday School teacher for both youth and adults, member of the church council, excuse me, staff parish committee, building committee, and most recently as a member of the Board of Trustees. And whereas, Mr. Thompson was a dedicated public servant who gave back to his community as a former chairman and member of the Dorchester School District Two School Board, and as an area commissioner and former chairman of Trident Technical College, where he served for thirty-eight years. And whereas, Marion Thompson was an active member of the Somerville Surtoma Club, Rotary, Civitans, NJCs, and volunteered his time to deliver meals with Meals on Wheels of Somerville for over twenty years. Now, therefore, be it resolved that Dorchester County Council does hereby honor Marion Kane Thompson for his service to his country, his church, and his many contributions to Dorchester County and the greater Somerville community. Be it further resolved that upon adoption of this resolution, the original shall be presented to the family of Marion Kane Thompson, Marion Kane Thompson, excuse me, and a copy filed in the permanent records of Dorchester County, South Carolina, adopted this fifteenth day of September twenty twenty-five, signed, see David Chenas, Chairman, attest, Lona R. Conrad, Court to Council.
Is there a motion?
Moved.
Second. And a second, any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Hearn.
Thank you. I have the distinction, other than Mr. Frampton, of journeying with Mr. Thompson the longest. I first served on council when he had already been on Trident Tech for eight years, so I started thirty years ago, and he was already a veteran area commissioner at that time, but Marion is a great man, a great person, a great servant, and I always found it interesting. He always very humbly would reach out when it was time to be reappointed and just, you know, would you mind, you know, would you mind kindly reappointing me? And it's like, of course, you know, absolutely, but his, you know, heart really was with, you know, students, with education, and this community, and, you know, very proud to have known him, to call him a friend and ally, and just grateful for this opportunity, so thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I just appreciate Marion's service for a really long time. It's nice to see that someone served longer than Hearn in a public position for Dorchester County, but I mean, he certainly had a passion for our young people and a passion for education, and appreciate that thirty-eight years of service, because it's a lot of time, it's a lot of time going to meetings, it's a lot of time driving down to meetings, and you're taking time away from family, and he did that for a very long time, so thank you for that service, thank you to his family for allowing him to do that, because it's a team effort when he's away from home, and we certainly appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone else? Mr. Ward.
Mr. Chairman, I had occasion to be Mr. Thompson's seatmate. We went on a Mr. Chairman, I had occasion to be Mr. Thompson's seatmate. We went on a tour of Claritin County and Sumter County and Florence County as we were looking at technical college campuses. And we saw where they had converted a Walmart, I believe it was in Sumter. And as a result of that, we had an idea that maybe we could replicate something like that. And I know he was very proud of what was accomplished, very specifically the opening of the Dorchester campus off of Dorchester Road. And I remember that level of energy and excitement he had, that it was a possibility and it coming to fruition. So I appreciate and really enjoyed that memory of being with him as we went from place to place to try to do something, which was to bring a campus to Dorchester County.
Anyone else? So I happen to have had some conversations very close as we had done that last appointment, and I'm committed.
Yes.
If we all, if we can all have that kind of commitment. All in favor? We are unanimous. And if I will ask, I'm going to get county council to come down here, and I will ask the family and all of the Trident Tech folks that are here to please meet us at the podium here. We will, we will get this done and get out of the way.
Thank you.
You don't have to be shy. Okay, everybody.
You want me to go behind?
There we go.
Okay, everybody. Have three. One, two, three. Okay.
One, two, three.
And I'm going to ask if when everybody says their hellos, I'm going to get council if we'll go back up to the dais, and the rest of you will stay here.
Thank you so much.
And I always want to say, if you work with Paul Lawton, I did feel another.
Paul always appreciates me.
Oh, I tell you what, I was with Lou, so I'd be with Paul every night.
That was a full-time job.
What does he want us to do now?
But we're going to have you stay and Trident stay, and we want to grab a picture of you with you as well. Do you mind one more picture?
So we're, I'm, we're going to turn this over to Dr. Wood and the staff of, or the board.
Okay, we're going to have you stay up here for just a minute, okay?
Yes.
So, Mr. Chairman, thank you for allowing us the opportunity to be here. We want to also recognize Marion for his 38 years of service to the college. He has been there through three presidents, and he will tell you that he hired the last two, with Dr. Thornley being there 32 years. He was proud of that. He was extremely engaged, from helping us build some of our amazing facilities. He was at Penning's Graduation. It wasn't just meetings once a month. He truly was a servant leader and did so much for Trident Technical College. And we want to recognize him and his contributions to Dorchester and Trident. And we are going to be renaming our Dorchester campus, the Dorchester Thompson Campus. So his family said he truly loved it and is extremely proud of Trident Tech, just as we are proud of him. So we will invite everyone to our ribbon cutting that hopefully will be held within the next month.
Thank you. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is an adoption of a proclamation number 25-13 proclaiming September 15th through 19th, 2025, as National Adult Education and Family Literacy Week in Dorchester County. And I would like to invite, I'm going to say, I'm probably going to ruin this up, LaCosha Mack, if she will come to the podium. No? No? Okay.
The next one.
The next one. Sharon Goss?
Wait, no, this is this one.
I'm sorry. I'm in the wrong.
It's that one.
I got you. Sorry. Got them swapped. We're pleased to present Dorchester County Adult Education with the official proclamation for National Adult Education and Family Literacy Week. AEFL Week is to raise public awareness about the importance and value of adult education, increase support for these programs, and highlight the achievements of adult learners and family literacy programs. Please welcome Ms. Spofford, Ms. Rivers, Ms. Prosser, and staff to accept the proclamation and say a few words. I'll get it right eventually.
Thank you so much for your time today. We're not going to take too much, but we just appreciate the recognition and the hard work that our staff does to increase awareness for the need for literacy programs among our adults and our families as well, whether it's financial, reading, helping our kids with homework. But our mission is to make sure that our adult learners have all of the opportunities so that they find employment and sustainability beyond their wildest dreams. So I think, I have to thank my staff, this is part of the group, for what they do every day, and so we're honored to be here. So thank you for your time.
So I'm going to get, if y'all will stay there for one second, is there a motion for this proclamation?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
And a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We are unanimous. And if you'll wait right there, we're going to come.
Yep.
Workforce Development and Adult Education and all these other good things going on. Great opportunity with Dr. Wood talking about the opportunities for adult education through Trident Tech as well.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Now, now I'm back on, back in order here. The next item on the agenda is adoption of a proclamation number 25-14 proclaiming September 25th as a National Workforce Development Month. And I will ask Mr. Crosby if he will read that proclamation.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. And just briefly before, if I may, just these ladies and adult ed, I had the privilege of working with them when I was in DD2. And I, just for the rest of y'all, the work that these ladies do and the staff there to bridge that gap is just outstanding. And we love and appreciate y'all and what you're doing for the community. Keep up the great work. So thank you. Mr. Chairman, proclaiming September 2025 National Workforce Development Month in Dorchester County, whereas Dorchester County is reported as having a labor force of over 85,000 individuals, sixth fastest growing county in the state. And whereas the regional workforce snapshot Q2 2025 reports, there were 446,202 people employed in the Trident region with an unemployment rate of 3.8%. And whereas challenges for potential workforce are exacerbated by barriers to employment, including transportation, housing, and childcare. And whereas collaboration must take place among the federal, state, and local government leaders, along with the state and local education, human research, human service agencies, local businesses, community-based organizations, and workforce development boards to achieve long-term, sustainable, and successful workforce development across high-needs sectors and emerging industries. And whereas Dorchester County recognizes the importance of workforce development and maintaining economic security. The county urges all job seekers to attend the Dorchester County Career Fair on September 16th at Trident Technical College, Dorchester campus, Thompson campus soon to be. And now, therefore, Dorchester County Council hereby complains, this month of September, Worktimber, as National Workforce Development Month, and encourages residents to join in, recognizing the contributions of the local workforce, and that workforce development plays a crucial role in supporting workers in the growing local economy. Adopted this 15th day of September 2025 by Chairman David Chenness, and attest, Clerk to Counsel, Lona Conrad.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? We are unanimous. If you will meet us at the podium, we will be happy to present this. Thank you.
I'm going the wrong way. I'm always the one going the wrong way.
It's not my fault here.
We go.
So I'm going to let everybody get out of here. It's not lost on me that September 2025 being Workforce Development Month, that tonight we will also give first reading to an ordinance looking at the opportunity to put a workforce housing ordinance here in Dorchester County to support that level of our commitment to workforce in Dorchester County and in the region. We're excited about that opportunity tonight as well. So before I get into the rest, if anybody is, needs to get out of here, I'm going to allow you to do that. All right. Next item on the agenda is a request to address council. First, I'm going to ask you if you will come up to the podium, state your name and address, and you have three minutes. And the first on the list is Ms. Diane Neff.
Good evening. Diane Neff, 308 Summerfield Court. I've been trying for the past four years to get a ditch cleaned out in Pepper Ridge, but it's fallen on deaf ears. Others have been waiting longer than that, some 20 years. I thought I'd read some comments that I've come across recently on the Nextdoor site of others like myself who can't seem to get the needed help from Dorchester County. Ruslan in Corey Woods, coming from Longshot here, but I'm wondering what we can do to get help from, with the flooding in our neighborhood. Could we maybe get a group of people collectively to call the city? I can only imagine this is going to get worse as hurricane season approaches. Patrick in Corey Woods, my house has been damaged, and the city, the mayor, and the attorney that represents the city have all been notified, and yet this continues and nothing gets done. My home is damaged because the town mayor won't dig the proper ditch to keep the flow of water away from my home. The problem still exists and will continue to exist as long as the people who sit back and do nothing. Diane and Corey Woods, vote out the town counselors that refuse to address the current problems, the flooding, traffic, and overbuilding. Please vote in the local elections. Fire the people not working toward our best and biggest investments, our homes. We can stop them and get the right people on our town council. There are numerous neighborhoods that need ditches cleaned out to prevent flooding of their homes and to prevent the possibility of diseases that are carried by the mosquitoes and rats that are harboring in there. Pepper Ridge, Corey Woods, Greenhurst, River Oaks, Bradford Chase, Pine Hill Acres, Moss Point, Briarwood, just a few of the many that have been asking for help, and it's fallen on deaf ears. Forbes recently posted West Nile virus, and this is just West Nile, there's many more diseases, is well-established across the U.S. Approximately 1 in 150 infected people, primarily children and the elderly, develop severe illness affecting the central nervous system, including encephalitis or meningitis, which can be fatal. I implore you to do the right thing and take care of these families. Especially with the cuts to FEMA, we need our local governments to look after their neighbors more than ever, as this is just not right. We pay our taxes. Please do your jobs and clean these ditches. Show that they're wrong and you actually do care. Have a good evening.
Ms. Neff, I just wanted to, I had had the county attorney actually pull the plat of the Summerfield Court, and on the actual official recorded plat for Dorchester County, there is no easement listed. Unfortunately, there is no way to clean on private property.
Because I also have it from a former council member that there was one, and that he had gotten.
That, that's the official, that is the official plat that's recorded in Dorchester County. So, thank you. So the next item, our next person is Ms. Wanda Glover.
Hi. My name is Wanda Glover. I live at 4902 Grey Goose Lane in Latson. I do want to acknowledge that Councilwoman Rita Mae Rank did visit our lane on Saturday to hear our concerns. Our dirt lane is just off Old Fort Road near Oak Brook Schools. We are classified as private on the Dorchester County site. We have a private road maintenance agreement that was signed in 2016 by current and previous owners of the lots on Grey Goose. The agreement stipulates that use of the lane is for lot owners and vendors that have specific business with these lots, such as deliveries and maintenance. The entrance to our lane is bordered by wetlands that are on the rear of the lots on Parlor Drive. A few months ago, we noticed a structure being built at the rear of 88 Parlor near their rear fence, but not in the wetlands. Then trees were being cut down in the wetlands, and boards were laid through the wetlands so they could bring the roofing materials to the building site. We were never notified of what was going on at all. We are greatly concerned because after sidewalks were laid on Old Fort, our lane now floods with each rain washing away gravel and leaving holes. We are constantly filling in holes that are created by rushing storm waters. Just a few months ago, I brought four pickup loads in myself, and a neighbor and I used it to fill in the holes. Our neighbors have brought in additional gravel since, trying to maintain our road. Now, we have been informed by owners of 88 Parlor, they are clearing the wetland with the intention of creating a dry They should not be allowed to use our private road. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Next is Mr. Tommy Fagan.
Yes, sir, just, how y'all doing this evening? Thank you for letting me speak.
Do your name and address.
Sir?
Your name and address.
Tommy Fagan, one-one-one Ponderosa Road.
Thank you.
You're quite welcome. Yeah, the development, this, where the sewers going in here for that development between Zaxby's and Scotts Range Road on Central Avenue, there's another hundred and nineteen units, that's about two hundred and forty cars. You can't get in and out of any of the businesses now, Graco. You can't, Publix, the whole Knightsville Crossroads is totally stopped up, just about it, until eight o'clock, nine o'clock at night. I mean, even during the middle of the day with all the schools on Orangeburg Road, you can't get in and out of Walmart, O'Reilly's, Zaxby's, everything is backed up. I mean, it's bad. There's a lot of car wrecks there now. I mean, fender benders go on daily, almost, and not only that, looking at the density that's going in there, hundred and nineteen, and counting the wetlands, there's only twenty-six acres there, and there's a bunch of wetlands and a flood plain, and a stream runs through the back. But with that kind of density, looking at the police reports on the television, Dorchester County's been having a lot of problems. There's been a lot of shootings, and it usually occurs in these high-density apartment buildings. Whenever you're watching on, looking at it on TV, that's where it goes. They burn down each other's apartments and everything else, seems like, but, and that's all going on in the condominiums, because there is no, I've been looking at places, two hundred and forty thousand dollars is about as cheap as you're gonna find a condo, and then they want between two and three hundred dollars a month regime fees on top of it. So, you know, that's anywhere in the county, that's the cheapest, that's going into cheap neighborhoods looking. So I'd appreciate y'all watching out for the density, because the traffic and the infrastructure isn't there. I know we've had a net drop in pub, in pupils in our schools, however, our schools are still overcrowded, and with these kind of developments coming at us, they're gonna be way behind before long. I was also looking, first reading of an ordinance adopting incentives to encourage the development of workforce housing units in Dorchester County. You're using government incentives, how do you derive, how do you keep any citizen, a taxpaying citizen of Dorchester County, from receiving the same thing that the workforce is getting? I don't know how you would do that. Government money's being used to subsidize evidently these workforce development, well, it's county money. How would you keep anybody that met the financial requirements from getting in there? I don't understand that, you know? There was workforce development housing, or workforce housing in Dorchester County. It went out back in the eighteen sixties there at Middleton, I think. So, you know, we're setting some pretty strong precedents here. I'd appreciate y'all looking at that. Thank y'all.
All right, last but certainly not least, Mr. Josh Widener, if you will come forward and do your name and address. Thank you, sir.
Okay. My name is Josh Widener, and I live at ten twenty-one Mount McKinley Drive. Tonight, I'd like to say good evening, Chairman and members of council. I recently picked up the position of President of the Board of Directors for Dorchester Paws. I joined Dorchester Paws for two reasons. First off, I truly love animals, and secondly, I love Dorchester County. I recognize that our organization has made mistakes in the past, and those mistakes have affected our relationship with council, and for that, I want to apologize personally. I want to acknowledge that openly and begin charting a new course forward. Our vision is to create a stronger partnership with Dorchester County, not only through the work we do every day caring for animals, but also through being transparent, accountable, and aligned with the county's long-term goals. The new shelter project is not just about a building, it's about ensuring Dorchester County has the right infrastructure to serve families, public safety, and animal welfare for decades to come. I'm here to personally commit that Dorchester Paws will operate with professionalism, open communication, and respect for this council. My goal is to mend this relationship and rebuild trust, step by step. On September twenty-third at five thirty PM, we'll be hosting a town hall Q and A at the Chamber of Commerce. This will be an open forum for the community to ask questions and learn more about the shelter project. We welcome everyone to attend as another step forward, full transparency. Finally, I'd be happy to meet with each and every council member, to listen, to learn, and to discuss how we can strengthen our future relationship together. Thank you for your time, and if you don't mind, I'd like to give each of you.
So, help if I turn the mic back on. Thank you, sir, appreciate that. Next item on the agenda is correspondence. Mr. Ward.
Mr. Chairman and council, while we don't typically respond to requests to address council, I do think it's important for council to note on a weekly basis, the reporters receive regarding ditches and cross-line pipes that are, that are cleaned, and I would be remiss if I did not report very specifically areas that were addressed during the week of the first through the fifth as follows. Halt Road Pipe, that ditch was cleaned. Twelve oh-eight Boone Hill Road, ditch was cleaned from behind both apartments in the outfall ditch to progress water flow. Two-eleven Ponderosa, ditch from that address to the cross-line pipe. One-twelve to one-fourteen Kemperwick Drive, the ditch was cleaned. Schoonover Drive, ditches both sides of the road from the beginning to the outfall ditch. Fabricators Street, ditch and cleaned pipes on Fabricators and cleaned out debris from pipes behind business. Nine eighty-one through nine ninety-seven Margaret Drive, ditches and pipes clean. Three oh-four Lob Lally, the ditches and pipes were clean, but also, one thing that I wanted to bring out based upon some of the comments that were made on Next Door, which, very specifically, ditches were cleaned and reestablished along the rear lot between Lob Lally and Longleaf and Corey Woods. So I wanted to make you all aware that we are now putting door hangers out so that we can take credit for the work that's being done by our Public Works folks to make sure, whether we're working behind someone's house, et cetera, that they are aware of the work that's being performed.
I'm gonna, I just want to make one comment just to add to that. I will encourage anybody, anywhere, and I know people don't realize this, but when, when your neighbor is cutting their grass, and they're dumping those clippings at that concrete drain, when they're surrounding that concrete drain with, with grass clippings that are higher than that, they are likely to clog up that ditch. I can show you one on Lee Street. I watched as he dumped several bags from his riding lawnmower in front of that, and that's in the town of Somerville, but I did, I did let the town know that they may have a flooding challenge there, because it was completely, on three sides surrounding that, that drain culvert on that, that section. So that, that's a challenge. If you see that your neighbor's dumping their leaves in the ditch behind your house or anywhere else, call the county, call the town wherever you live, and let them know what's going on so that that doesn't create a problem, because even if it doesn't flood there, when those leaves wash down and plug that, that culvert somewhere else, that is going to be a problem at some point in time, without question. Mr. Ward.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman and council, I do have two items of correspondence and one additional item, which was a notification of a grant that I will share. One was already mentioned in the resolution, which is the Dorchester County Workforce Career Fair will be held on tomorrow, September sixteenth, from ten AM to one PM, at the Trident Technical College Campus on Dorchester Road, one zero zero five five Dorchester Road. There will be over thirty local employers ready to hire. So we'd strongly encourage the general public to take advantage of that opportunity, including bringing a current resume with them. Secondly, SC DOT will hold the drop-in public information meeting regarding the proposed intersection improvement project at US seventeen alternate and Central Avenue near Somerville from five PM to seven PM on Thursday, September twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five, at Greg Middle School located at five hundred Greenwave Boulevard. Again, the public is encouraged to attend. There will be project display boards, and they will have opportunities to speak with SC DOT representatives and have questions answered. And then last but not least, we received notification from Congressman Mesa's office, as well as Senator Graham's office, that the county was awarded a fiscal year twenty-five AIG grant for the Somerville Airport in Dorchester County, specifically two hundred and thirty thousand, four hundred and thirty-eight dollars. The purpose of this project is to construct a new twelve-hundred-and-twenty-foot taxi lane to provide airfield access to non-exclusive hangar development areas, as well as to construct a new thirteen thousand, five hundred and fifty-five square, square yard general aviation apron. So we're excited that we awarded that grant, and we got a little heads-up from some of the members of our congressional delegation.
Thanks, sir.
That was for the Somerville Airport.
For the Somerville Airport.
Next item on the agenda is councilmember's time, Ms. Rita Mae Rank.
I'd like to consider a request for approval for pay increases for certain elected officials in accordance with the Human Resources Policy Manual. Do I have any motions?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the pay increases for elected officials, certain elected officials, in accordance with the Human Resource Policy Manual. I'm gonna second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, very clearly, this is not county council. I want to make that very clear. This is sheriff, the auditor, the treasurer, and other full-time employees, but we are not voting on any type of pay raise for the folks sitting up here.
Just a, just a, from a housekeeping standpoint, typically what, what you would have done on a councilmember's time is you would have actually on that made the motion yourself and just asked for a second.
Yeah.
So that would have been the proper, just, just for the future from that standpoint. The proper thing is with your standpoint. So is there any other discussion on this? So I'm, I'm, I'm gonna make, I'll, I'll have the discussion here. This is tattam out to what we saw in Columbia where the legislature decided to, though they're not raising councils' pay raises, we have a group of elected officials that ran, some of them most recently as last November, with knowing full well what the salaries were. Without question, they knew when they ran what those salaries were. And yet we've decided to go around what we actually said in July, where we were going to put the elected officials within a comp and class study that we were looking at, and decided to give these elected officials whose salaries are certainly deserved, but ultimately the decision that we are going to come outside of a comp and class study and arbitrarily, based on some lobbying phone calls that were probably made in the background, that, that that is, is what we should do. Would we do it for ourselves? Well, we can't, because that's ultimately not legal. Are the elected officials sitting in the audience to stand up and tell us why they deserve those pay increases? I don't see any of them here. When, when we do raises for the staff, it's based on long-term conversations between their supervisors and the senior staff to make certain that those are warranted. Those are typically done from a standpoint, from our standpoint, to keep our employees from going to the next county over, or three counties down, or whatever that case may be. And I'm not sure any of these elected officials would leave tomorrow to go to one of those counties, because they are in fact elected officials, and each of those counties already has someone in that position. So, in any case, all in favor? There are six in favor, opposed, and as, as usual, I will, as a fiscally conservative Republican, I will vote no. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda are guests, and Mr. O. is gonna come up, I think at the last meeting, we actually had some questions about our accommodations tax. In front of you, you have a sheet that sort of describes where the requests were. I don't know if all of them identify where that money is stated, or where that, whether that money was approved in a couple cases, but some of you had those questions, it's in front of you. So now we're gonna let Mr. O. give us that, one more shot at this.
Chairman Chenness, members of council, county administrator, good evening. I am presenting on behalf of the Dorchester County Accommodations Tax Advisory Committee. The chairman of the committee wasn't able to make it here today, so I'm stepping in on his behalf. The recommendation was brought before council at the September second meeting and was tabled because council had some questions about the applicants and source of funding. That additional information that was requested has been provided to council, and we hope that council is willing to consider the recommendation at this time again.
Is there a motion for approval on the accommodation tax recommendation?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
There is a motion and a, is there a second?
Second.
There is a motion and a second, any discussion? Everybody good with the sheets in front of them? Do they understand that they need further explanation? It's pretty cut and dry.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you for getting that additional information to provide clarity for, for us, and thank you for the, the time and information.
Anything else? I, I would, in, in, in talking to Jason, basically, at the Industry Appreciation Day, he mentioned it, and I, I think Denise mentioned it as well, Ms. Christmas mentioned it as well, that the presentations that they gave this year on these were, were better and more thorough and more complete than they had had ever. What I would challenge the Accommodations Tax Committee and, and staff is for us to more actively seek additional applications for these, and I know we talked about that last year, but if we need to figure out a way, if there's any holdback on this one, to use that to make certain that we contact nonprofits and those groups within the county that can use this funding, that we actually not just wait for them to come to us, but reach out to them to make certain that, and the goal here is some of the big guys, and we certainly appreciate, we couldn't probably do any of this without Middleton Place, with the numbers that they bring in and the dollars they bring in out there from a standpoint of, of the ATAX. So I think we're always appreciative of that, but I'm sure they would appreciate having other things for people to come to within this county to help generate, so they are not the, the horse pulling this entire cart, that we get some other horses in there, or ponies, if, if that's what it takes to get it started. But all in favor? We are unanimous. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is Mr. Mario Formasano, Deputy Administrator for Public Safety, in a presentation of the twenty twenty-five through twenty thirty Dorchester County Strategic Plan. Mr. Formasano.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and council. I appreciate the opportunity to provide an overview of the twenty twenty-five, twenty thirty strategic plan, what I've affectionately be just, just referring to as Dorchester County twenty thirty.
county that can use this funding, that we actually not just wait for them to come to us, but reach out to them to make certain that, um, and the goal here is some of the big guys, and we certainly appreciate, we couldn't probably do any of this without Middleton Place, with the numbers that they bring in and the dollars they bring in out there from a standpoint of, of the ATAX. Um, so I think we're always appreciative of that, but I'm sure they would appreciate having other things for people to come to within this county to help generate. So they are not the, the horse pulling this entire cart, that we get some other horses in there, or ponies, if, if that's what it takes to get it started. But all in favor? We are unanimous. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is Mr. Mario Formasano, Deputy Administrator for Public Safety, in a presentation of the twenty twenty-five through twenty thirty Dorchester County Strategic Plan. Mr. Formasano.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Counsel. I appreciate the opportunity to, uh, provide an overview of the twenty twenty-five, twenty thirty strategic plan, what I've affectionately be just, just referring to as Dorchester County twenty thirty. Um, it's about a year ago, I think, that me and Mr. Ward were, um, we were discussing the status of the strategic plan, and we were talking about the upcoming budget preparations for the subsequent fiscal year, and we got to the, the point of like, how are we going to do it? In years past, we have brought in an outside facilitator to kind of kick us off and to guide a lot of the process. And then most of the, the planning from then on has been handled through one or two budget retreats with county council. Um, and that's generally been taking place in about three-to-five-year intervals. Um, so, you know, about a year ago, I was feeling, feeling pretty good, feeling pretty ambitious, and I said, well, this is something we can do in-house. Um, and, uh, and he said, well, give me a proposal. Let's see a plan of, of how we're gonna carry this out. And I did, and, uh, here we are today, and we're gonna do a little bit of a look back of the past seven months and what it's taken to get us here to this point this evening. But I think it's appropriate to start with our vision statement. This is something that you all established in twenty nineteen, which was the last time the county did any significant updates to its, uh, what was referred to at that time as its strategic direction. But I think it's important when we're considering this vision statement and its, um, its alignment with the strategic plan as, you know, this is forward-looking. These are our long-term aspirations. We're considering our desired future state, and we're looking at guiding principles that help us make decisions. And we've been strategic plan, we've been strategic planning in Dorchester County for more than twenty years. Uh, our records show that our first strategic plan was developed in two thousand and one, and so just a little snapshot there of some of the focus areas that made up that first plan. Um, and then this timeline certainly doesn't encompass uh, all of the activities and the work that went through the years, but, um, as you look at two thousand and six and two thousand and thirteen and two thousand and nineteen, you see, just to get a little bit of a sensing of, uh, some of the ways the council, um, was navigating the process and ultimately producing a plan. Um, and a lot of that also involved how we're reporting that information out to the public to show progress, uh, for the work and the investments that we're making for the future of, uh, our county and our communities. And then there are these interrelated plans, um, and I'm probably missing something up there. In fact, I do. I, I know as I was putting this together this afternoon, I was gonna, I was gonna miss something, but the Green Belt Master Plan is also an interrelated plan, um, that's encompassed here. But everything from the comp plan to our library master plans, parks and rec, the strategic, uh, plan for public safety was something that, uh, we developed collaboratively with the Riley Center, and that was inclusive of, uh, everyone within, uh, the Public Safety Directorate and the Sheriff's Office and the Coroner's Office as well. But we came together, um, in twenty twenty-one, and in twenty twenty-two, I stood here in, in April of twenty twenty-two and presented a, a public safety strategic plan, which we've substantially completed. But for the last four years, that's been something that's basically been interrelated to the county's overarching strategic plan. And then, of course, economic development, uh, within the last year, uh, produced their own strategic plan and, and an impact report, uh, this past summer, and then the opioid abatement strategic plan was something that we developed about eighteen months ago and continue to work through. So as you look at our goals and objectives, and I'll talk about, talk about some of the action items within, um, the first eighteen months of this plan's implementation, there are definitely, um, areas that speak back to these other interrelated plans. So just a recap of the planning process, um, one of the things we wanted to do, uh, in this update cycle is we wanted to make sure it was a really inclusive process and that we started with our department heads and elected and appointed officials, um, to get a sensing of where they see the organization in its current state and where they'd like to see us go. Um, so we, 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 we conducted a survey back in the January, February timeframe. We gave them some time to put this together. We had, uh, over forty responses from our department heads, elected and appointed officials, and then some deputy directors and other key positions that we really wanted to collect information from. We use that information to develop the agenda for a visioning and strategic planning retreat that we held in February. That's the, the top picture there on the slide. We did that at the Rosenwald School in, um, in St. George, and we spent an entire day talking about not just visioning and strategic planning, but we also talked about leadership. We had a guest speaker from the Association of Counties come in and talk to us about leadership to kind of set the tone for the day. Um, but we, we really dove into the SWAT, that's the Strengths, Weaknesses, Opportunities and Threat Survey, and we, we, we basically had these little mini whiteboarding sessions where we divided, divided the room up into groups. Um, we took a lot of that information that we collected through that retreat to prepare that dialogue, that initial dialogue with you all on April third, as part of the capital improvement budget retreat, to start talking about goal setting. And so we briefed you all, you provided us input, we kind of went back to the drawing table, and then we moved into the May retreat, and we brought forth those proposed, uh, finalized goals, and then we started to generate some ideas for our objectives. Um, we moved into those mapping workshops. As you might remember, that was, those were individual meetings, or they were in groups of two, um, where we really dove into the objectives, and we started talking about, we started getting into a little more detail, a little more granular information about, um, what some of the outcomes, what some of the actions might look like embedded within those objectives. Um, and we used that, um, to guide the process as we moved into June. Uh, we started identifying section owners. Uh, those are for each focus area. So I'm gonna talk about community health and infrastructure and growth, and each one of those sections has a section owner that over the next five years will be responsible for facilitating the updates and the continued development of action plans. We had some coordination with Invisio. As some of you might know, we use a, a program called Invisio to organize the plan and to collaborate with one another, and then ultimately produce a performance dashboard where the public can readily access, uh, the status of our plan, the outcomes, the success. Um, we're really looking forward, uh, to having a refresh on the performance dashboard this time around. We have some ideas for how we're gonna organize the, the information. And, you know, that's just another communications tool that we're using. The, uh, the plan that you have in your packet is obviously very black and white. I'm actually working with Economic Development, uh, and over at Economic Development to, to develop something that will go public probably by the end of the month. Um, through the months of July and August, I refer to that as planned socializing. So between the section owners, um, and their contributors, there was a lot of dialogue taking place, uh, over the course of those two months to start generating ideas for action items, primarily focusing on the next eighteen months. And that culminated in an action planning workshop on August twenty-second, where we brought all of those contributors together to really chew the fat on how we were gonna narrow down this great big list of potential actions into priorities that we were gonna move forward for the next eighteen months. And so, you know, when you look inside your packet and you look at some of the dates associated with those actions, you have to keep in mind that we've been having this conversation for months. And so when you say, well, I mean, that's not very ambitious. You got something that's supposed to be completed by January. Well, this is something that was really identified, you know, probably back in the spring. Um, so again, it's just, it's just really getting us started, and I'm gonna talk about at the end here, um, what the plans are, what the next steps. But we brought, um, those recommendations for the first two years to the county administrator in September. And so again, that's what you see before you this evening in the form of that very black and white, uh, final draft of the plan. So this aligned framework was something that we introduced when we had our kickoff meeting with department heads and elected and appointed officials, and we briefed you as we were going through the budget retreat process, kind of informing you of where we are within this aligned framework. And I'm really happy to report that we've finally reached the end where it's time for us to nail execution. But this has been something that's good and very appropriate for us, as we bring a lot of ideas from different departments, um, individuals at, at various levels within each department, based on their roles and responsibilities, to start to pull together something that we can confidently execute, um, and carry out over the next five years. So I'm not going to read each one of these objectives verbatim, and I'm not gonna call out every single action item, because we have about forty objectives in the entire plan with this cycle, and we have at least one, two, and in some cases, we have three action items just for the first eighteen months. And so, as you can imagine, those add up pretty quick. Um, but as we look to the future, once we get into years three, four, and five, um, if we have, let's just say right now, we have probably somewhere around a hundred action items, we're gonna be able to look back and see that we've completed probably more than three hundred action items over the next five years. And so I think that also makes this a very important communications tool, and an opportunity for us to tell our story of all the things that we've accomplished, uh, leading up to twenty thirty. So as we look at community health, um, obviously, the, the primary care facility in St. George is, is one of our top priorities there, but as we, as our goal is to open that facility in Fe- February of twenty-six, that's when we'll actually begin starting to track performance indicators and to add, and to determine the appropriateness and the timing of adding other diagnostic services. And then our goal is eventually to have an urgent care up there. But it's gonna be important that we've been, we identify what those indicators are, we track those indicators, and we continue to have dialogue with MUSE to understand where we are, um, and, and what else they're looking for to help guide those decisions. Um, a lot of these actions that I'm gonna touch on this evening are in an assessment or in an analyze. A lot of those actions start, uh, as an assessment or an analysis, because in some cases, we really need to figure out exactly where we are. If we don't know where we are, we, how are we going to develop a plan, uh, to get to that end state? So assessing the services of the senior center, identifying opportunities for improvement and developing an action plan, and, and to expand or improve services. We're looking to do that by July of twenty twenty-six. Assessing the services of the Alcohol and Drug Commission in the Western County, this is something that actually just started recently. Uh, Councilman Smith was at a meeting, um, with some other officials, what, about two weeks ago, two or three weeks ago, where we sat down, um, with alcohol and drug, and we started talking about the different services and the needs. Really, this is gonna be a needs assessment that's conducted, um, on the western half of the county, that will ultimately help alcohol and drug determine what presence they need to have, and probably working out of the St. George area, but to be able to serve, uh, that geographical area of the county. Homelessness, the unsheltered population continues to be a, a growing issue that we have within the county, and so looking to expand access to warming and cooling centers with a goal, um, of establishing at least two new partnerships with faith-based and nonprofit organizations by October of next year. If we move down to infrastructure, we're talking about finalizing the Ridgeville Area Drinking Water Master Plan and looking to implement, uh, those capital improvements that are in the zero-to-five-year planning horizon, beginning in January of next year. Constructing the Sawmill Branch Trail, the Oakbrook Extension, uh, to Dorchester Road by twenty twenty-seven. Improving MS four permit compliance through education and outreach initiatives by the spring of next year. Developing and monitoring reporting, I'm sorry, develop and monitor reporting systems to track and report on green belt pro- progress through an annual publication. Uh, that, we want to do that by spring of next year. This is the problem with me reading from a script here instead of just going off the cuff. So if we move into growth, um, identify, evaluate, and acquire a site for the downtown Somerville Library by July of twenty twenty-six. In coordination with the South Carolina Association, Association of Counties and our state legislative delegation, updating state law regarding joint residential improvement districts. Looking to conduct a county-wide watershed study with Berkeley County and the town of Somerville to protect and improve stormwater management by January of twenty twenty-seven. And then it was, uh, mentioned this evening, I know they talked about the Innovation Center, but analyzing location needs and opportunities for an innova- Innovation Center and securing a site by April of twenty twenty-seven. I might be an overachiever, but, uh, you probably see within your packet that public safety has three action items, and because I've had the privilege of facilitating this entire process and, and migrating the standalone public safety plan into this document, that provided our group a lot of opportunity to start having those conversations early and mapping out, you know, really building off the success that we had over the last four years within the public safety group. Um, but some of the things that are important to us in, in kind of the near term is conducting a staffing analysis to quantify personnel needs based on population growth, call data, and program enhancements by January of next year. That will help us inform the budget process. Um, we have some continued conversations and coordination taking place between, uh, Berkeley, Charleston, and the town of Somerville to improve real-time information sharing, and we're, we're really, really close to, um, determining exactly how we connect the CADs with Berkeley County, because they are also using Southern Software for their CAD solution. Um, seems very doable and something that we hope to accomplish before the end of this fiscal year. Uh, conducting a comprehensive capacity and services study for the detention center, uh, to look at not just, um, our inmate population, but the level of services that we provide to our inmates in the form of medical, our intake processes, our rehabilitation needs. I could have gone back to community health and talked about the opioid abatement plan, but we have identified some strategies within the opioid abatement plan that specifically address the detention center. And we've, we've begun, we've, we're on our second year, um, of a, an enhanced healthcare contract with Genesis, where we're providing additional services to inmates that require medication-assisted treatment and other counseling services as a result of their substance use disorder. Um, so there's, there's a lot to unpack there, um, and this is really just the tip of the spear when it comes to opioid abatement, but that's something that's primarily focusing on the detention center. Um, and then finally, um, as it relates to public safety, we launched a program at EMD less than a year ago to start developing an infrastructure protection program. And the first deliverable there will be a plan, uh, and then that plan will call out specific, uh, priority projects that we'll look to implement in coordination with both our public and our private sector partners, uh, by the summer of next year. As it relates to service delivery, uh, by the, by July of twenty twenty-six, we want to develop and implement an annual customer service employee development program and ensure that at least eighty-five percent of our employees are participating. We're gonna form a cross-departmental innovation group and develop the scope and objectives of the group and establish a meeting schedule for calendar year twenty twenty-six. That dovetails nicely into the objective that's related to leveraging AI, uh, some of those chat solutions, automation, and other emergency, um, technologies that can improve the efficiency of our organizations, uh, and our business services. Uh, developing and implementing a train-the-trainer course, oh, I skipped something there, I'm sorry. Uh, we're gonna review, revise, and update the county strategic communications plan and present any significant updates to county council during the FY twenty-seven budget process. Um, that plan was developed in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, um, and it, it has served us very, very well. Um, and we've continued to monitor our progress in implementing that plan, um, but it's time that we do a thorough update, um, and that's gonna be taking place over the next twelve months. Last item under, uh, service delivery, last action item, um, utilizing the Community Paramedic Program to identify at least three service gaps impacting our vulnerable populations by January of next year, and then recommending adjustments, um, program adjustments for fiscal year twenty twenty-seven. And then finally, the last focus area, uh, certainly not least, workforce. So this was already mentioned this evening, uh, we need to complete a compensation and classification study and recommend implementation strategies to administration and council by April of next year, if not earlier. Uh, create an annual satisfaction survey for employees focusing on key areas, including leadership, communication, compensation, and work-life balance by the summer of next year. And then finally, um, our HR department recently launched, uh, an initiative they're, they're coining as Do Well Dorchester County. So that's our wellness program. That's a new wellness initiative, um, and they're looking to continue to increase participation as much as, uh, ten percent by the end of this year, but that's gonna continue to grow by consistently offering one course per month, um, related to physical, mental, financial wellness, uh, and promoting those opportunities on a quarterly basis, uh, to promote countywide wellness challenges and other events. So I know that was a lot, and I probably went way too fast.
Nope.
So finally, the next steps. Here we are this evening, presenting the plan to county council. Um, we'll finalize that plan and that public document by the end of this month. Again, I mentioned that we were doing that in coordination with ANO over at Economic Development, 'cause I am not a, a graphic designer by any means. Uh, we'll operationalize the plan by the end of the month. I think I've alluded that some of that has already been done. We'll start building that plan in Invisio in the month of October, and then our goal right now is to publish that performance dashboard in the November, December timeframe. We'll pull our section owners and our contributors together after the first of the year, and we'll finalize our key performance indicators. So that was something that we didn't, we didn't visualize in our performance dashboard, uh, from the twenty nineteen plan, but that's when we're actually gonna be able to, you know, really leverage the capability of Invisio to put charts and graphs out there, uh, to really illustrate and tell our story of the success that's taking place. And then I have these last- And then I have these last items in bold, which will be, our next substantial report back to you will be during the budget process in April of 2026. We'll share with you our success at that time, some of our challenges. But at that point, what I'd like to see is we're already having conversations about additional action items that we're going to start pushing forward in the years to come. So this is really a continuous cycle as we look to track performance, strategy development. That's why it says April and beyond. And then, you know, again, in addition to having the performance dashboard, we're going to publish an annual impact report every year as well. So that might not be a huge lengthy document, it might, you know, it might be a one-page infographic, we don't know what that looks like quite yet, but, you know, I've said this over and over again, but I think it's really important that we use this opportunity and all the work that's being done by many, many hands within the organization to tell our story and the impact that we're making within the county and our communities. Any questions?
Yes, sir. Just a clarification, when you were talking about the watershed study, you just mentioned Berkeley County, Dorchester County, and the town of Somerville, and I'm assuming it's a, but Charleston County's included in that watershed.
So, maybe?
I think we talked about that.
Yeah.
High County.
I literally, yeah. Kira?
Yeah, we can make it regional.
Okay. What we do affects them.
Going off of what, Kira?
If I'm not mistaken, wouldn't the COG willing to jump in on this and help some of this?
I think we can get some federal support as well as the home builders, so getting the tri-county on that watershed study is key to have all three counties.
It'll come up in executive committee on the COG to look at, the entire COG looking at the watershed study. Definitely.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next item on the agenda is county administrator's time.
Mr. Chairman and counsel, the first item I have for your consideration is first reading of an ordinance adopting incentives to encourage the development of workforce housing units in Dorchester County, South Carolina. Very specifically, over the last year, we've worked to try to determine a manner in which we can provide housing that is affordable based upon 30% of the gross income of workers such as sheriff's deputies, corporals, first responders, and EMS such as EMTs, paramedics, also first responders such as firefighters and engineers, and last but definitely not least, teachers. We looked at their specific salary ranges, both from DD2 and DD4 for the teachers. We looked at our minimum and midpoint salaries for the county-type positions, which are in line with police officers as well. So what we have done is we have proposed to you a matrix. That matrix includes providing 20% of housing at 60% of area median income, 60% at 80% of area median income, and 20% at 100% of area median income. Has already been stated tonight and also identified in our community needs assessment. This is one of the challenges that we have to have these essential workers in our community is their ability to afford housing. And so it is our recommendation that you consider first reading at this time.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I think this is a great first step, so I appreciate staff and anybody else that's been working on it. I do think it would be good for us to get some feedback from some of our private sector partners. I've gotten a phone call or two with some interest in helping with making sure that we get something that's right. I know we've been talking to some other counties, but I'd love for us to engage our private sector folks as well, just kind of like we did with some of the other things recently, just to be able to get their input as well before we get too far down the road. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other? I think to be very clear, and I had stated this earlier, staff's worked on this for quite some time and have gone through the local counties, I think Greenville being one of the biggest ones, looking at those numbers there. We are not as aggressive as Greenville, I don't believe, because Greenville may even be looking at theirs again. It's hard to look at Greenville and say that they have not been successful with bringing in this industry and also providing housing for the folks that live in that general area. So this was, again, not as aggressive as some people would like, I'm certain, but it is something, somewhere in between giving away the farm and doing absolutely nothing. Is there a motion? I had a motion, sorry. That was discussion. All in favor? We are unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Ward.
Next item I have for your consideration is first reading referral to the Planning, Development, and Building Committee for a public hearing and recommendation regarding an ordinance to amend the Dorchester County zoning and land development standards ordinance number 0413 as previously amended. With respect to Article 20, Section 20.1.1, general lot design standards for the purpose of excluding townhome development from the maximum lot width to depth, a little misspelling there, ratio requirement, I ask for first reading referral to the PDB Committee.
So move.
There is a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? We are unanimous. Mr. Ward.
And the final item I have for your consideration is a request for approval to amend the Human Resources Policy Manual to add position to the home garaging list. This is very specifically the Deputy Director of Emergency Management, which is considered an on-call 24/70 position for emergency response, both for field response as well as technology as it relates to 911 and our radio systems. As for your approval, it's recommended.
Your motion.
So move.
And a second. Any discussion? I think the only discussion that I will have is when Mr. Ward presented this to me at the agenda meeting, I said, is that not already there? But in any case, any other discussion? All in favor? We are unanimous. Next item on the agenda is committee report. At 5:45 this evening, the Water and Sewer Committee met. We had one item on the agenda, request for approval of new sewer service for 119 lot subdivision by Knightsville LLC, TMS number 135-16-00-068, near the town of Somerville for Knightsville Central Track Phases 1 and 2. It is property currently zoned R4, does not require rezoning, and there is capacity available. That motion went through unanimously.
You heard the recommendation of the committee. What say you?
Aye.
In favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I have it.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is my favorite, is appointments to boards and commissions. Do we have any motions?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir.
I would like to nominate Clifton Larry to the County Transportation Committee.
You heard the motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We are unanimous. Any additional appointments? Next item on the agenda.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Steve, you got to speak fast.
Mr. Chairman, I do have my last appointment to fill the Accommodation Tax Advisory Committee, the vacant position. Have the pleasure of nominating Frankie Seropoli for the A-Tax Committee.
Second.
There is a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? We are unanimous. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Next item on the agenda is county attorney's time.
On behalf of the Water and Sewer Department, for the purpose of the county's Regional Water Interconnection Project Phase 2, the county attorney's office would request the use of eminent domain should negotiation, negotiated settlements fail for portions of the following TMS numbers. 120-00-00-011, 127-0000-077, and 113, 133-00-00-074, 072, 047, 068, 067, 228, 028, 082, 077, 159, and 160. The next number was a typo in the memo, it should be 142-0000-063. Then 140, I'm sorry, 150-0000-008, 236, 158, 028, 104, 040, and finally, 215. I will not repeat and reiterate.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
There is a motion. Any discussion? I think the only thing I'll say is you've got about three times as many to catch up with me.
I know I do.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are unanimous.
Next, Mr. Chairman, I ask for council's indulgence to vote to go into executive session to discuss two contractual matters, the first being the potential purchase of real estate Jedberg Fire EMS Station, and secondly, to discuss a workforce housing proposal.
So move.
There is a motion and a second. We are in executive session. If you are staying around with us, please do. If you are headed out, please drive safe. I got a little bit ahead of myself. All in favor of going into executive session?
Aye.
We are, I saw that, Peter. We are unanimous.
Mr. Frampton, will you bring us out of executive session?
Mr. Chairman, Executive Session, Council discussed the previously announced items, but no action was taken.
Do we have any motions?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that County Council authorize the county administrator to negotiate and enter into a purchase agreement with Jedburg Baptist Church for the purchase of approximately .93 acres of TMS number 121-0000-107 at U.S. Highway 78 and Brewer Road. Brewer Road for $350,000 with the further authorization to consummate the purchase by the county and execute any and all documents necessary to close the transaction.
You've heard the motion. Is there a second? Motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
No.
We are unanimous. Are there any further motions?
I make a motion that we adjourn.
There's a motion.
Second.
All in favor? We are adjourned.